Mr. Woods, would you do us some, please, indication?
Well, dear Father, we've been coming for the Lord, and I know that we know how. Father, thank the Lord for life and for strength. Father, thank the Lord for allowing us to gather together one more time to us to put our minds together, Lord, and make more kind of better things to live in prayer. Father, continue to be with all those that are wrong of the sick and the shitting, and those who believe in me. Father, we have this in the Son of Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. You got it. See my pen there? Yes. Please pray to him, Mr. ... Before we do approve of agenda items, I have one item to add to the agenda. Please let's add to 4F, Workforce Transportation Initiative. This will be discussed by administrator. Item 4F, please add Workforce Transportation Initiative. And with that addition, I maintain a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we accept the agenda for tonight with the addition of item 4F. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Next, we have approval of minutes for our regular council meeting, June 19th, 2018.
Madam Chair, I'll make a most good set of minutes at reading. Second.
It's been moved in second that we accept the minutes for the June 19th, 2018 meeting as written. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. We have no old business. This is the start of our fiscal year, 2018-2019. We'll go right into new business with ordinance 775 to authorize Marlboro County to enter into an agreement with the city of Bennettsville to provide for the exchange of services between the city of Bennettsville and Marlboro County with revisions as requested by the city. This is the first reading of the city. Administrator and Mr. Monelman have been in conversation, and would you elaborate on what the proposals are, please?
Yes, ma'am. As you know, this county council approved this agreement over a period of three months with three different votes, and then we submitted it to the city of Bennettsville for their approval, and once it reached them, they had some concerns or some issues with different parts of it. Specifically, the agreement that you passed included a dollar amount of value of the services that we provide the city. Now, to understand how we came up with that dollar amount, it was pretty simple. We took however much it cost to run the jail, and we figured out that the city had 39 percent or whatever percentage, that may not be correct, of inmates in it for a year, and we multiplied those two together. Same thing with 911. And so we came up with those numbers, but when you passed it, it did note that the city had the right to do the same thing. There was just a trade of services. The dollars were there just as reference, so we would know what it's costing us. That was one issue. The other issue was that they wanted it to be a five-year agreement, and council passed it as a one-year agreement. And the last issue they had, it included a provision that the county collects taxes for the city, and that was in agreement, and the city wanted that to be a separate agreement. So hearing their concerns, I've had some discussions with Max Alderman there, and what I've put in the agreement that you have a copy of, the changes that I'll recommend to you all, and certainly open to your discussion, as we have to approve this three different times, was that it be a three-year contract, but that either party can say you're not going to renew it with six months' notice. What good does that do? It makes it where we don't have to vote on it all the time unless we decide to terminate it. So it sort of, you know, goes towards what they're asking for, but preserves what you wanted. I removed the cost figures, so there's no dollar figures in there. I will say that on our end, anyway, on the county staff end, we'll run those numbers every year, because the concern I have is what happens if a law passes on the state level that makes it five times more expensive to run the jail than it did this year? Or say it takes 10 times as much to run the city fire department they're giving us. You don't want to get in a situation where it's lopsided and we need to go back to the table on it. But I did take the numbers out, and then left the tax collection part of it in the agreement, which is not what they really wanted, but made it to where if they decide they don't want to do it in a particular year, as long as they let us know by July, they cannot do it that year. So now, you know, my concern as a staff member is that we don't want to create two places that people have to pay their taxes. You know, there's a lot of things to do with that, so we're hopeful that the city would not decide not to collect that. But those things are in there. The only other thing that came from the city's work session last night, or whatever they had last night, was that they wanted to have a provision that says, at the end of three years, if nobody gives any notice, it just rolls again for three more years. It doesn't really matter to me, as recommended to you all. So apparently, they have, from what Mr. Alderman has said to me, they have accepted the compromised position of three-years agreement with a notice, six-month notice you can get out, take the cost figures out, leave the tax collection in, but make it where you can get out every July. That's where we are. So that will be my recommendation. We certainly can change it any way council desires. And again, you've got to read it two more times, so there's time if you needed to do something.
I'd like to point out that in your packet is the agreement with the items highlighted in red that have been changed or deleted, and I'm recommending that we pass first reading, and then based on questions or issues that may come up by the next meeting, we can address them then, but not to prolong it any longer, that we go ahead and do the first reading tonight, and that before the next meeting, you go through, it's a very short agreement, and take a look at what's highlighted in red and then what's crossed out to see if this is what we really want to do. I think it's a good start, and it may be the answer to what we need, as long as what you said, that we're keeping up with the cost on every year, so that nobody's lopsided or underwater, and that it's equitable between the two agencies. Questions or comments?
I'll make a motion for what you said. A second.
All right. It's been moved in second that we pass ordinance 775 for the exchange of services for first reading only, with the understanding that we're going to go back and take a look, a closer look at what the administrator's given us in our packet, highlighted in red, for consideration. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. It's unanimous. Next, we have approval of the South Carolina Department of Juvenile Justice, DJJ memorandum of Agreement for Juvenile Justice Detention Center for the Fiscal Year 2018-2019. So whenever juveniles are arrested, they're transported to DJJ in Columbia, and if they have to be housed there, I want to say in park, possibly, but have to be housed, there's going to be a bill for that. Standing agreement, Mr. Monelman?
Yes, ma'am. It's just the annual thing we do each year.
And it's good to see that hasn't changed from $50 a night. It's been that for some time. Questions or comments? I entertain a motion to approve this memorandum of agreement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the 2018-2019 agreement between the South Carolina Department of Juvenile Justice to house any juveniles that need to be transported from Marlboro County to their facility. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. It's unanimous. Next, we have Resolution 071801, authorizing the submission of an application by Marlboro County for the airport grant from the Federal Aviation Administration in the amount of $1,000, excuse me, $113,395, and authorization to accept the grant if awarded. This grant, there's a small match by the county, and the tarmac or the runway needs to be paved. They've got some vivid pictures of showing all the cracks in the asphalt, so...
Here's one correction. If you look on there, we need to correct the dollar amount in the first whereas to 113 instead of 13.
Okay. All right. All right. Entertaining motion to...
Motion.
Second.
It's moved in second that we authorize the application of the grant and to accept the grant if awarded. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. It's unanimous. Next, Resolution 071802, to accept for the 2019 fiscal year, the used oil grant in the amount of $11,250. Is this used oil collected from the local...
Recycling.
Recycling, but collected from the local gas stations or place that does oil...
I'm not sure. I think it's where we have some collection points that we take it in.
Convenient centers. Okay. All right. Questions, comments?
I'll make a most good set of resolution 071802.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the resolution to accept for the 2019 fiscal year, the used oil grant in the amount of $11,250. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Resolution 071803, to accept for the 2019 fiscal year, the waste tire automobile disclaimer recycling grant in the amount of $2,750. Small amount.
And we've spent every dime, you know.
I'm sure.
We're chasing the tires. This is very helpful. No match.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And move we accept this resolution?
Second.
All right. It's moved in second that we accept Resolution 071803 for the waste tire, automobile tire recycling grant in the amount of $2,750. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. It's unanimous. Next, we have the item added to the agenda, the Workforce Transportation Initiative. Mr. Monelman, please tell us more about this.
Yes, ma'am. This is something that's kind of come about here very recently, in the last couple of weeks. As part of your strategic plan, planning sessions and then the things that came out of that last fall, one of them was transportation. And of course, part of that was Highway 38, trying to four-lane Highway 38, that sort of thing. But the other part of it was workforce transportation, folks getting to work. And we hear more and more from the larger industries like Mohawk, that they have lots of good workers that sometimes can't come to work because the car breaks down, or they folks don't have the money to have a car, or maybe they're carpooling with three or four people, and they lose three or four workers in a day. So we've been looking, Stash been looking, I've been looking for opportunities to have some sort of transportation. And so when I started digging into it a little deeper, found out that there was already some other efforts going on to have transportation for healthcare facilities here. And so we're able to sync up with those folks, led by CareSouth. And you know, CareSouth's building a nice facility, the Love Foundation's funded over in Mr. Odom's district. And they already were, you know, looking into this, and so I went to meet with them and showed them some routes that I had kind of sketched out that would loop and go from McCall to Don'tar and Tatum, and back out to Marley and Southern Packagin, through town to Sopaco, anyway, about the Mohawk everywhere like that. PDRTA was involved, PD Regional Transportation Authority, and they've come up with some figures. So the good thing is that when we did the Mohawk tax incentive package a while back, which hadn't been that long ago, we put in there provisions to take part of that new money to pay for something like this. So we've got money, or you all approved money, to go into the economic development type things like this. So what they're looking for is, you know, $25,000 to $50,000 a year, try to do it for a three-year period, to pay for this, and it would be free to the people that wrote it. And it would make a loop that let folks get to work and get home from work. And so I wanted to go ahead and bring it to your attention, because it's an exciting thing, and you know, I knew you'd be interested in it. There'll be a more detailed proposal that'll have to come to you all, but what I'd like to do is answer any questions, and if you're agreeable, have a vote of just supporting the broad parameters of it, so I can go forward and say, hey, council is for this, assuming we get the details down pat.
Was that just for work, or was that healthcare too?
Well, what happens, they'll all run together. So, you know, you can imagine trying to line this out where you're meeting every shift, start, and all this and that. Just the basics of it are that to get people to work, we'll go on in a frenzy, and then you'll start taking people to doctor's appointments. So it'll actually kind of work out beautifully.
Got you.
And they found money elsewhere. We wouldn't be the only ones. It's a real good thing where they found money.
Bus, van...
They're talking about right now, the first one was like one of these bigger church buses, you know, that holds like maybe 30 people. And then they would try to have two of those, and maybe a smaller van that could do more kind of special cases kind of thing. But as, you know, as you had people riding it, they looked to go bigger. Of course, they probably come back with money, but... The other good thing is PDRTA, at one time, 10 years ago, got really, really big, and then it sort of had some issues and didn't get big. Got small. And the guy that's running this now seems very focused on planning this with money he knows he can get. And then if you go from there and you can get some more money through a grant, then you can do bigger and better. So I was impressed with that.
Has any type of assessment been done in the community to gauge number of people who are interested?
No, ma'am. And there's a concern that, you know, they've done this elsewhere, and people don't ride the bus. So what the thoughts are is to come up with a three-year plan and just know for maybe a year, you're just going to have to suck it up, and you're going to have buses that don't have a lot of focus on it. And then everybody gets involved, and everybody goes through the churches, and everybody gets it out, that, you know, this is a good thing.
It's free. Would that include the Northeast and Tech Campus in Chiraw also?
They were talking about running it, well, not going to Chiraw yet, but to run it down past the new N E T C, Windex E down through where CareSouth and Scott Line and McCloud is, on through town, stop at Courthouse, you know, all that. The next phase, I think, would be to run one, like you're saying, out to Wallace, to Powder Bridge, to Hena, to Tech, back down. But that's not in the initial plan. I don't want to be misleading.
So there will just be a designated route? It won't be answering or going to people's houses to pick them up?
They would have a smaller unit that could do that on a certain case basis. They don't want to make it where they're taxing.
Right.
And there's concern about that.
Right.
But there would be some flexibility with a smaller unit.
Would this be 24 hours? Because some of the plants work 24 hours, and people are getting off...
It looks like, very, very, very preliminary.
Okay.
You know, certainly first shift and probably second shift. Third shift's a challenge. If you get all the way to the end of second shift, then obviously you can get third shift, because you're going to be at the end of, you know...
Right.
But it's like a bowl of spaghetti, trying to figure out how to make it all work. I just, you know, I know it's a little premature not having all the details, but you all being bought into it would really help push it along. Mr. Glady, any question?
The plants wouldn't be a problem, I don't think, because they have a steady schedule for picking people up and them getting off from work.
Right.
Healthcare could be a major problem. DSS was doing that a while ago. Making doctor's appointments is one thing, because that's important, but what time they leave to pick them up and take them back is a major problem. So that's something that you really got to be careful about before it's picking up from plant to plant. That's a solid schedule. And the plants were supported, because a great deal of people can't get to work, because they don't have cars, and somebody's bringing in three or four people, their car break down, now you've got four people that didn't make it to work, you know? So I think that'd be real positive for that part though. The healthcare and...
I think the good thing about that side of it is that CareSouth is so involved in it, that they have control over... They know that they got to make these appointments work, or flex, and all that. So again, I mean, it's about half-baked, but all the ingredients are there in the oven, so I'm excited.
Yeah, I am too. I'm forward, you know, just thinking about...
There's a lot of work to be done.
The doctor's office, dentist office, and going back to get them, you know, and getting this going. I agree with that.
Yeah, that's in their original plan, anyway. The new facility in McCall, I think that Love Foundation is involved in that, and that was one of the highlights that they were talking about, was that they were going to have transportation for people to make it to their doctor's appointments and have a ride home, you know? Because it's, you know, the facility now is right in town, so it's sort of actually walking distance for some people, probably. But this new facility, they had already made plans to have a transportation system set up, so that'll be part of it, you know?
Transportation in rural communities is always a challenge, so it's good to know that there's interest in doing this, and I think we seem to be in agreement that we should say to you, pursue this and take under advisement the questions that we brought forth, and to really, some type of survey to find out, you know, how many people would use this. And you said the operative word for me, and that was free.
Yeah.
You know, because that's another challenge, having the money to pay for a service. So I think this is a good move in the right, in the right direction.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Do we need to vote on this, or just...
If you would, just vote.
Okay.
Approve the concept, understanding that I've got to bring you the details.
A second.
All right. It's been moved in second that we authorize the administrator to continue to meet with the group and to get more details on this proposed workforce transportation initiative. It's a good thing for our county. Thank you. And before we move into appointments to boards and commissions, I'd like to introduce and welcome our new county attorney, Mr., or attorney Andrew McCloud. Welcome aboard. We are happy to have you with us, and depending on your legal expertise, we try to stay on task and do the right thing, but if we're off task, don't hesitate to make sure that all of our bases are covered legally when we're conducting our meeting. So thank you and welcome aboard. Are there any appointments to commissions or boards? Anyone have any appointments? All right. I'll ask that administrator or the clerk to see if we have any vacancies as we're starting off our new fiscal year, and let us know if there are that we need to make appointments. All right. Mrs. Moore, finance report, please.
Madam Chair, members of council, as you know, our fiscal year ended June 30th. We've already begun the process of closing out our books, and we'll be receiving adjustments from our auditors that will affect our year-end totals. After this has been completed, we will then be able to provide you with our final reports for the fiscal year. At the last meeting, Mr. Steen asked about the total amount that the county has been shorted in local government funds over the last several years. This information is listed in a report on the Association of Counties website. It's for fiscal years 2008 through 2016, and for this time period, our county has received $2.3 million less than what the formula allocates. In total, counties in the state have been shortchanged by $68 million for this same time period. I intend to provide an updated report at a later date, giving the most recent revenue amount since this only goes through 2016, and we'll compare that with the expenses that are mandated by the state as well.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Yeah. That's a significant amount of money. Just think what we could do.
Yes, ma'am.
We have access to that $2.3 million to pass eight years. It's a travesty that our Journal Assembly is doing that to the county, so we just have to do what we can do. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Monelman?
Just over eight years, that's about five tax meals a year, right there. So anyway. Administrator's report, we have, we always talk about our service anniversaries, and we have a few. It's Jeronda Harrington, seven years. Sharonica Henigan, 11 years. Rob Stanton, 20 years. And Martha McQuig, 11 years. We have the annual Association of Counties Convention coming up in a couple of weeks. I think most of you are signed up for that, and there's different classes and all you can take, so please get with Ms. Bundy if you need help or need more details. With regard to economic development, we have a few updates. The Delta Project is moving along slower than I'd like, but it is moving along. We have a meeting with D-HAC officials in two weeks, and that'll be where we really set forth the plan on moving forward with cleanup and demolition there. So we're happy about that. One thing we want to try to do with Delta, and Mr. Steen had talked to me about this, and I think it's a good idea, is to try to get Lynn McQueen, our museum director, to gather history regarding the Delta site, because thousands of people literally worked there over the years. And people, you know, have some ownership in that, and we would like to, you know, maybe have a reception when we get it cleaned up some, or have some displays in the museum, or even up there about Delta over the 50 years it operated. So we're going to be working on that, and would encourage, or would welcome any input from any of you all on that. The Balboa Building in Clough is still going on. We met this week about that. Still optimistic that's going to work out. There's no indication it's not. It's just, again, things take longer than we want to sometimes. We talked about the transportation initiative. I think that's a big positive for economic development. We have a prospect looking at the Borro site, I think I've told you all, and we had to talk about that this week, or today. And of course, their concern is can they find enough workers for what they want to do? I know that seems crazy for us, but there really is a concern, and someone with the Department of Commerce told me today that the PD region is the only region left with any available workforce now, because the unemployment's so low, and there's jobs have been created elsewhere, that this is one of the only areas that still have available workers. Of course, the issue is we have to make sure we train folks, and that they can get to work, and that sort of thing. So doing things like this bus line are going to allow us to access folks that maybe couldn't have done it before, that were worried about applying because they didn't have a reliable vehicle, that sort of thing. So that's a good thing. As far as the administrator's report, part of my administrator's report, we had an all-employee meeting today. We tried to have those, we want to have them at least a couple of times a year, just tell employees about changes or the budget and that sort of thing. So we had it today. We do it in two shifts, so we have it, and then we have lunch, and then another crowd comes in. So that was a well-received, I think, today. The, we were able to support the Saltahatchee Project in the county. That's the Methodist Church group that renovates houses, and they're doing one on Bass Lane, up number nine, I guess that's Chavis Town, Wallace area. And we were able to let them use that yellow dumpster we have, the Clean and Green Dumpster, and it's a big help, and that's the kind of thing it's designed for, so we're happy with that. Tomorrow morning, we have a meeting with the EMS Task Force. This is a very important issue that hadn't gone away. The task force is continuing to meet to try to come up with the best long-term solution to having top-notch EMS service in the county. As we've said many times, without a hospital, you know, it's even more important to have that. You know, I just wanted to make sure and remind everyone, and particularly folks watching on Facebook or wherever, that we've done a lot of work with that task force in the county and the council to understand what's going on and how to best do things. You know, we've had, we've got some ideas that'll be discussed tomorrow that maybe a bigger picture view of how to do this might be a good solution to do it longer term. You know, you did approve a contract with Marlboro EMS for this coming fiscal year, and I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that we did a lot of research and a lot of scrutiny of our contractor, Marlboro EMS. We did an audit. You know, we looked into how their money is and how their procedures are. That was all done by our external auditor that we use for our own stuff. All that was done before we did a contract. And when we did the contract, it has things in there that will, we feel, make sure that we stay in compliance, that we're doing things we're supposed to, that our contractor's given us the reports we want and all of that. And then it's up to staff to make sure we get those things. So we didn't just go sign, take the same contract, scratch out the number, the date, and sign a new contract. There's actually a good bit of work that went into there, and I think that if all the aspects of that contract come to fruition, that that will be in good shape. But at the same time, the task force is looking to make sure we're going down the path we need to go down, that we can sustain and not be worried about this year after year. We certainly would like to have a hospital, and if there's any way to figure out how to do that, we'll all work towards that, but I think the reality is, in the short term at least, we're not going to have a hospital. But I think the reality is in the short term at least, we're not going to have a hospital. So that's all I had. I can try to answer any questions. Thank you.
Right, thank you. There are no citizens' requests to speak for council. We recognize council members. We start with you, Mr. Odom.
Don't really have anything, just appreciate the job everybody's doing, all the county workers and, you know, we, we're all a team, we're all working together and it's basically like a family. And, you know, we try and look out for each other and things are fairly quiet over in my area, so I guess that's the way we like it.
I'd just like to echo that too, that, you know, I appreciate everybody's support with me. Tough go there for a little while, but we made it and like Mr. Odom said, it is like family here and we do try to work for the momentum of the county. And as long as we doing that, I sure want to be a part of it, so. But I thank everybody for what you've done and thank staff for your hard work and, you know, just, just good to be back with everybody.
Well, I'm glad you're back, Steph, without a doubt. It was a heck of a fight, but it was worthwhile. I'm glad that the citizens came out, it's very important. It's like 15.3% of the people who came out to vote, I mean, that's extremely low. So I want to thank the ones that came out to vote and I would like to see more people getting involved in our elections, right? Because we need to keep good people up here and so it's a blessing that you're here and I appreciate that a great deal. I want to give thanks also, well, to Wrightsville Fire Department. I mean, I got to bring them out that way. Our fireworks that we did on 29th was, was really something great that we did up there. But the fire department turned out and they brought gifts for all the children that appeared. I mean, all the kids was there, got a gift. They had gifts for adults, but they had the fire hats, everything that they gave out. The kids just really truly loved that. It was, you know, it was just like a great day for them and with the fire truck there, you know. I was, man, I was amazed. That was like really, really good, you know. When you see stuff like that, what people do for children, and this, this is really the biggie, and you look at the parents and mainly grandparents, you know, for them to volunteer to bring boxes of gifts out and, and I had no knowledge of this, it's something that they did on their own, you know. I stopped by to see Bill Paris, which is the chief up there, and told him how, I know you know how great these guys are, but it's the family, the women, the mothers, the wives behind them that was out there giving gifts out, you know. I truly, truly appreciate that, so I give them thanks. But I got to point out the McGovern family because they was there underneath the tent and they was there all day and it was hot, you know. That was great. Our newspaper reporter, if y'all seen the newspaper, for the way she wrote it up for the kids that was there, I mean, kids three years old getting a trophy for playing T-ball that they will have the rest of their life and have their picture in the paper at the age of three. I mean, that, that gives them incentive to want to do this again, you know, instead of running in the street, you know, that's, that's extremely important, right? So I just want to give thanks to that. The voting bothers me, like I said, you're talking about 15% of people in the county voting. We got to do better than that. I mean, things got to change here somehow. I don't know what it is to get the people out and get them to understand what's going on. I'm looking out here right now at our council meeting and we look at how many people we got sitting out here. Everything about that is wrong. I mean, these seats, these chairs should be full and I don't know how we're going to reach them, but we need to bring them in. And, I mean, they, we need them at school board meetings, we need them at our city council meetings, which I'm going to get to in a second. We got to advertise some kind of, we got to let people know what's going on. I look at the citizens here, I know it's going to take a minute, I'm sorry about that. The citizens in Benesville, as hot as it been, I look at their electric bills and when I see that the city gets a kickback, and I'm using the term kickback, of $48,600 every single month that they get back on their electric bill and it's not being passed down to the rest of the citizens, right? When they buying a billion, a building for $750,000, that's all kickback money. Then you're going to turn around, you're going to give the bank property plus a building free from the city of Benesville's giving to the bank free and donating another $50,000 of that, but the citizens can't pay their lake bill. I mean, you've got people that's, that's in their house sweating now because they can't afford the air conditioning running, they can't afford fans and during the winter, they freezing. And we sitting back and we notice what's going on. We know exactly what's going on and it's nothing being done about it. That needs to change, right? The things, the backdoor deals have not changed. I've been talking about this here for six months and haven't changed. $340,000 given to the Lakeside community to beautify the lake, our transportation money when the roads are terrible and there's nothing being done about it. I think we really need to sit down and, and talk with our administrators, our senators, our house representatives and say, hey, listen, what are y'all doing? I mean, how can you approve this here? How can you let this here continue going on? I mean, I know I'm talking to the choir and it's not going to go anywhere, but something got to be done. So what I would like for the administrators to do is to see, to try to look at, can we meet with our people, man, with our senators and say, hey, come on, help us because we going further down the hole. I mean, it's like, you got the kid, we gotta, gotta do something different. And, you know, people say I'm hard on the city of Benesville. Yeah, I'm hard on the city of Benesville when I see what they doing to the people that's in my district. Yeah, I'm very hard on that. And they're not televised, they keep everything undercover, they do what they want to do and we can't do nothing about it because that's the city. But the city's inside the county, like we inside the state. Change has got to be made.
You're good?
I'm good.
All right, and just, the fireworks were, was great at the basketball. I didn't get to make many, but you had a good show and a good turnout. So like I said, we do want to thank y'all for, I know you put a hard, a lot of hard work in it and so, like I said, we did get to enjoy it and a lot of kids got to enjoy it. One thing is up at our convenience center, just some people's been telling us, we have one of our employees, Raph McDowell, he said he just goes above and beyond, you know, he just works hard every time you pull up, he'll grab your trash out, get back in the truck, you know, and he greets you with a smile. So, you know, it's good for whenever you see somebody just in a convenience center and they say, I want to tell you how good an employee is, you know, I want to, I want to make sure that Mr. Carrboro, Mr. Mullin, they hear, they hear that. So, you know, I've been getting some good feedback from him and, you know, you know, whenever he's there, so he's just been great. So like I said, a lot of the older people like that, you know, they, someone had trouble throwing them up over the dumpster, but he said he jumps out and grabs them, throws it right up there. So I wanted to let everybody know because they said, make sure we tell them. Ms. Moore, thank you for getting those numbers for us. $2.3 million that was ours, which was to citizens, that we could imagine what Marlboro County could have done with two point, almost $2.5 million, that's a quarter of our budget this year almost. So if you think about that, what we could have done over the last few years with that money, you know, it's just, you know, and it'd be, and it's the same thing this year, there's going to be a shortfall this year again. So it's just, you know, and what else they're going to tack onto us, the ad next year, you know, it's just, it just really makes it hard to sit up here and try to move forward when you have that type of money out of your pocket, you know, out of the budget that you can't do anything with. So hopefully it's, the, in Columbia, they can get together and come up with a good formula that, that gets us a little more money every year back to each and every county across our state. And so, but with that, thank you, Mr. Mullin, for continuing the Delta Project. Seems like it does go nowhere, but you know, we know he's working hard and so, but hopefully in the next few months, we'll be able to see some progress being made, so looking forward to it.
Anyway, I'd just like to congratulate Steve on a successful election and Anthony before that. And I'd welcome Andrew McCloud to the county and look forward to working with you all. Proach?
You do the pass? You pass them? That would be good, that is, right?
Yeah, I would like to just say for the families who supported the recreation program, Marlboro County have a girl team that's playing for the state. They lost yesterday, they, they lost the first game, they won yesterday and they're playing right now, probably, just ended. Our boys, Ten and Under, is going to Munch Corner and they play for the state championship. You know, and it's not often that we at the Recreation Baseball beat Horsville, but I'll tell you, Ten and Under beat Horsville twice and that's a coup. I called Mr. Harrington, I gave him my congratulations because that is a big task and they go to Munch Corner this weekend. They had a great following down there in Wallace, they held in Wallace and they, they stay in the room only down there. And several other parents said they're going to Munch Corner. And it, I know years ago, I took a team down there, it is a great experience. You see teams all over the state and hopefully we can go to the world, you know, they've got a great opportunity. And the citizens of Clagio is, we're really chopping at the bits for Ball Door. I hope this thing come, come to an end soon, but I, we know Mr. Mullin is working hard and diligently on bringing this building back to life again and bringing employment, not only to Clagio, but to, you know, Marlboro and Dillon County. Because we, that's what we need, you know, when, when everybody making money, when more people making money, the world is a better place. So we welcome you again. Hope you'll be here for a long period of time so you can get great like us. You get that quick here now.
He's working for the county.
He would get great quick. But I did joke it away. You're good, you're good. And that's it, Doc. Back to you.
Thank you. I, when Mr. Wood said that, I wanted to say, you know, they had a sub-district enter up, had a district in Wallace, you know, the volunteers up there, they did great, they worked on the fields, flew to fly, I mean, it was real professional and so it was a great thing, you know. And the reason they have the district because when Horsville, they beat both the Horsville teams, they beat, you know, everything Horsville had, they beat both the teams, so, you know, and so that was good. So they had the, the sub-district and the guys from Horsville said, the field and the park looked so good that they want, asked if they could hold a district there. So, so that was good, good work for the, for the guys and ladies up there that worked hard to, to put on that tournament, you know, and so wish them well when going to the state, you know, so like I said, that's.
Dr. Prince, I would also like to recognize our voter registration board, Lloyd Kane Moses and Ms. Thompson, and I'm not sure the name of their assistant, but they go above and beyond to try and get the support up in these elections and stuff. In this past election, they found out there was about fifteen or twenty people that's ballots got turned around and sent to Columbia and they went out of the way with Ms. Hagin to make sure that people got the ballot delivered to their house and stuff. So like I said, we got two great people, three people, three people with our assistant that do everything they can to help get the turnout up and, you know, we just need to get them good support and, you know, I'm like, we like, we've really, 16% in the primary and 10% in the runoff, we've really got to do better than that. And anyway, that's all we got.
Yeah. And just to piggyback on that with voter turnout, we have a new young man that's chair of the Marlboro County Democratic Party and he's concerned about issues dealing with registration and voter turnout. And I just got an email that he's scheduling a meeting. So they're being very proactive, trying to find a way to get our people out to vote because so many people don't realize that your vote counts and especially for local elections, things that impact their lives. We're off to a good start. It's good to hear that progress with Delta and Boro area, the Boro initiatives coming through and good to hear that you are looking at cleaning up that Boro community area so that when the new business comes, then we'll have a nice community for the people that are going to be working there. It's always good to have prospects and it's about time that we've heard of some new industry. We appreciate the expect, expansions done by the existing ones, but to have something new coming to the county. The transportation initiative will make, make it easier for people to get back and forth to work, so that's a good thing. You all have heard me year after year talking about the local government fund and they do have a formula. Okay? But every year, they vote to suspend the formula. And this year or this past term, members of our delegation voted to suspend the local, the funding, the local government fund. So it just amazes me that we have people representing us that don't support the monies that should be coming to the county. So anytime you run into any of our, members of our delegation, please ask them, you know, why and what can they do to make sure the county gets the money they're supposed to have. The Delta site, a lot of families, built houses, sent their children to school. It was one of the shining stars in the community, so it's good to see that it is going to be used again for economic development. So I'm real happy with the progress we're making on that. So with that and welcoming our new attorney, I will adjourn the meeting. Enjoy your evening. Turn off your microphones.